And we're live.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Committee on Legislation this June two thousand and twenty-one at one o'clock. I will be chairing this meeting in the absence of Councilmember Joel Faroletto, and we will start from the top. Ethany.
Roll call, Councilmember Galumbak.
Here.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Present.
Councilmember Scanlon.
Present.
Council President Priggin.
Present.
Councilmember Bowman.
Present.
Councilmember Wyatt. Councilmember Wingo.
Present.
Quorum is present. Item number one, food store license twenty-two seventy-two Genesee.
This item is in the Lovejoy District.
Items open.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We are going to keep this item. I'm going to ask that we table this while I meet with the owner again, and we did have some preliminary discussion with the community, but we're just working to, you know, make sure every, everything's moving along smoothly. So I'll ask that this is tabled.
Motion to table.
Seconded by Councilmember Scanlon.
Item number two, new tire handler fifty-nine Stanislas.
This item is in my district, in the Fillmore District, and I have spoken to, and my office has spoken to the applicant, and there are a set of conditions that we are setting on both of these items. So we will be, I will be marking this without recommendation, so I can firm up those conditions before next Tuesday. So I'd like to make a motion to.
Motion. Motion to send without recommendation.
For items two and three.
Items two and three?
Yep. Seconded by Councilmember Scanlon.
Item number four, special use permit twenty-two twenty-seven South Park.
Motion to table items four, five, six, and six.
Motion is to table items four through six, seconded by Councilmember Scanlon.
Item number seven, special use eighteen ninety-three Niagara Street for tavern and outdoor dining.
Items open.
This item is open. This item is open in the North District.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I would like to request staff to contact the Department of Permits and Inspections. There's an issue with this property with its exhaust fan, and I have residents on Dearborn Street who have said that the exhaust, when it was a restaurant, was blowing like right into the street because it was built too low. So I need to find out whether that is accurate or not. So I would ask staff to contact uh, permits and inspections to find out, and if that is the case, what must be done to be rectified? I'd like to help the property owner uh, that owns the restaurant to be able to help him, because I'd like to have a business back in there as well. Um, but I want one that everyone in the neighbor is comfort, neighborhood is comfortable with and doesn't have to deal with odors coming from. Um, so we can recommit this or table it, Mr. Chair.
Motion to table.
Seconded by Councilmember Bowman.
Item number eight, special instrument nineteen eleven Seneca for tobacco establishment.
Motion to send without recommendation.
The motion is sent, uh, is to send without recommendation. It is in the South District if the South District Councilmember has anything else to say.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I know the, the applicant's on. Um, I'm going to call him immediately after this meeting to discuss this with him.
Okay, thank you. Majority Leader, motion is.
Okay, thank you.
Motion stands to send without recommendation.
Seconded by Councilmember Galumbak.
Item number nine, ordinance amendment sex, section thirteen dash twenty-one, right to no law.
Item is open, motion, item is open.
Um, Mr. Chair.
Open, yes, this item is open and is sponsored by Council President Priggin, who has the floor.
Um, we're going to table this item. We're supposed to get the revisions from Corporation Council this week. Um, we could receive and file it, but I don't want the public to think that it has disappeared. Um, so if we could table it until we get the revisions.
Motion to table.
Seconded by Councilmember Galumbak.
Is there anything off the table?
Yes.
Okay, motion to take items ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen from the table.
Okay. Motion is to take items ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen off the table, seconded by Councilmember Bowman.
Item number ten, special use permit seventy-four Jones for neighborhood shop restaurant in N three R zone.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Thank you, Majority Leader. This item is in the Fillmore District in the Precious Blood Neighborhood on seventy-four Jones Street. If the applicant is here. I don't see anybody here, so this is going to be a new cafe and restaurant in a neighborhood that really needs it, and uh, I've spoken to the owners, you know, a couple of months past and explained to them, you know, the feel of the neighborhood and how they can be a benef, you know, benefit to the neighborhood that really could use, uh, in an establishment like this. So I will make a motion to, um, you know, motion to approve, Majority Leader.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Seconded by Councilmember Galumbak.
Item number eleven, special use permit two forty-five Allen Street for outdoor dining in N two C zone.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Motion is to open up the public hearing. This is in the Fillmore District. There is a few speakers on this item, uh, but we will begin with the first, which is the owner of the restaurant and the hardware, Charlie Goldman, if, if Mr. Goldman is here to speak. You're on mute, Mr. Goldman.
Are there any questions, or you would, do you want me just to describe what my hope is?
Give, give a brief overview of what you, what you look to accomplish.
Right, so as of now, we have a patio permit for the front of two forty-five Allen Street. Previously, up until two thousand and nineteen, we also had a patio permit, the same permit that wrapped around and up north on College Street, all on my private promise. I, um, I removed that a couple of years ago due to just lack of necessity. And, uh, but now we're reopening tomorrow, so I would hope to regain that college, College Street side for patio use and also to extend it to the building that I bought next door, which is two forty-nine Allen Street, which is of, uh, an old, uh, Joe LaCotta's Plumbing Supply Shop, which is now a vacant building looking for a tenant. So I'd like to get some activity in front of that. We're going to have, uh, four tops, four, you know, tables that seat four people, umbrellas. We've got delineated, uh, we have it delineated by ever, nice, uh, evergreen bushes and it'll add about twenty-four seats, I believe.
Thank you, Mr. Goldman. There are a few of constituents of mine who have joined this meeting, so there is a, a list of speakers, so I will go off the top. Is Jonathan White, is Jonathan White on?
I am.
The floor is yours.
So, um, the, the patio itself, uh, of me is not concerned. The, the concern that I always have with patios is the closing time um, and what time it would close, especially going up, uh, College Street, um, where it begins to get closer to, to houses and residential.
You're asking me when it's going to close?
Yeah, what, what.
I believe the city has an ordinance saying eleven P M. Is that right?
Uh, generally, we've been asking Charlie, everyone to close at eleven Sunday through Thursday and midnight Friday and Saturday.
I'll be closed by midnight Friday and Saturday, for sure. My whole, the, the, we used to be open till four. Oh. Uh, we're, our closing time is one A M. every night of the week, so we're substantially cutting back our hours.
Okay, um, so just hold on one second. We, all the remarks have to be to the chair. So Jonathan, um, just, uh, if you have any other closing remarks, just, uh, you know, give your suggestions and we'll go through the list of speakers and I'll tie it up.
Thank you. So my, my closing remark is, um, from neighbors, at, at least on Lower College Street, no opposition. Um, as long as, Mr. Chairman, the closing time is as requested.
Thank you, Mr. White. The next speaker is Deborah Green. Is Deborah on?
Yes, I'm on. Um, my comment would be to agree with Jonathan White. Um, one concern that I have is that the patio is used only for dining and that there's not any, um, vibe music or music being generated on that patio.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Uh, the next speaker is Days Park President, Dolores Murphy. Dolores, the floor is yours.
Oh, I also agree with Debbie and Jonathan. Uh, I live on Days Park, so I'm not directly affected by, uh, the patio at all, but, uh, you know, over the years, we have been affected from people leaving the bars on Allen Street as far as vandalism and noise and so forth. And, you know, if the council does grant this, I would hope they, um, they are considerate of neighbors and put some conditions on these.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dee. And yes, this is my district and, um, you know, it's very important to me that, that, you know, all establishments are hom, are homonious and understand and take, um, into fact, the, the neighborhood. And, um, I do believe that we can come up with conditions that uh, benefit the neighborhood and the establishment, and my staff will be reaching out to everybody that has been on the speakers list and also with Mr. Goldman to come up with conditions for the patio uh, that we see fit and that can, uh, benefit the neighborhood. So I will like to send this without recommendation, Majority Leader.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to send without recommendation.
Motion is to send without recommendation, seconded by Councilmember Bowman.
Item twelve, zoning map amendment fifteen Sheffield from N three R to N three C zone.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Motion is to open the public hearing, seconded by Councilmember Chris Scanlon.
Mr. Chair, I'm not sure if anyone's here to discuss the item today.
I am. Can you hear me?
Who, can you, can you put your name and address on for the record soon?
Sure, Stephen Noak, and this is property regarding fifteen Sheffield.
Okay, uh, I will let the speaker go first. You can go, sir.
Oh, sorry, um, yeah, I just want to move the resident, uh, N three R, now I want, I want to get it over to N three C because it's tied to a property on twenty fifty-eight South Park, and that's commercial. So I just wanted to put it all as to one, uh, same tax code and same, um, zoning. And if you look far back enough in the fire records, it shows that fifteen Sheffield's never been, uh, actual house on there. It's always been tied to this property that's tied to twenty fifty-eight South Park. So I just like to make it all one commercial, um, property.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Scanlon.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, thank you. I'm just wondering if the applicant could kind of describe what his intention is with the pro, the property, should he receive the rezoning?
Sure. Right now, there's a, like a eight hundred, nine hundred square foot, um, old auto mechanic shop on there, and the place is pretty dilapidated. I just want to put up a nice new fence around it, uh, either spruce up my current shop right there and then eventually maybe put up some more, um, garages or, uh, storage units, um, either on the front or a combination of the back and the front. Um, and it's just, right now, there's just the one building, um, that's, you know, dilapidated, falling apart, lots of trees and, um, fencing that's been up for eighty years. It's just full of, uh, debris and everything. So just want to clean the place up, probably repave it and, uh, turn it a little bit more functioning and, uh, more pleasant on the eyes.
Mr. Chair, um, if, if we could, could, um, we have the applicant. I would ask that you come, call my office, and I'd like to set up a time to meet you out there. We can go over everything.
Okay.
How would you like this marked?
So we could, we could send it without rec.
Okay.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Motion is to close the public hearing that is seconded by Councilmember Priggin.
Motion to send without recommendation.
Motion is to send without recommendation, seconded by Councilmember Galumbak.
Item thirteen, special use permit one twenty-five Crescent for non-owner occupied short-term rental in N three R zone.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Motion is to open up the public hearing, seconded by Councilmember Bowman. This item is open and in the Delaware District. If there's any speakers, I believe Sarah Reen is on, or she is on the speakers list.
Um, this is Sarah Reen. Oh, this is Sarah Reen. I'm on.
Hi, Sarah. The floor is yours.
Um, so, uh, basically, we own a double at the corner of Crescent and Florence, and we are renting the upper level to a couple, um, with a long-term lease, and then the lower unit we're planning to use as an Airbnb.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Uh, there are two speakers, I believe, is Jamie Perry on? Hey, I don't see Jamie. Uh, is the next is Helen. And I see Helen now.
I think, thank you. Um, my, my question is basically, if there is a special use permit, um, given now that the upper apartment is being rented, would that permit go to the entire residence so that if you choose to no longer have tenants, the entire house would be an Airbnb?
Okay, the question is for the applicant.
Um, I'm not sure how that works, um, but we plan to keep long-term tenants in the upper unit. Um, I don't know if I'd have to reapply or if that, if an Airbnb would cover both units.
Thank you.
Okay, so this item, the Delaware District Councilmember, is that here right now? So what I will do is um, mark it without recommendation, so that when the council member, uh, returns, he can make the decision on how to properly mark this item. But, uh, right now, we'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Is seconded by Council President Priggin.
Motion is to send without recommendation.
Motion is to send without recommendation, seconded by Councilmember Bowman.
Any further items, anything off the table?
Mr. Chair, can we please revisit?
Hey, Councilmember, you've accidentally gone back on mute.
I think he's trying to go to item nine. He's on mute, but if that's the one, um, I want to comment before we revisit it. Is item nine, I see it's there, shake. The, uh, there's someone on right now who wanted to comment. I want to be clear that the reason there was no comment, uh, period, is because we don't have the new document. And some of what may be discussed may be in the new document. I have not received the comments of, of, um, Samantha White, who is asking to speak. So I don't mind the public being heard. The, my hesitation, though, is we don't, I have no new document yet from law, and I have not seen the email that she sent to, uh, council staff that I'm just learning about. So I have no problem, Mr. Chair, if, uh, you, uh, want to revisit that and, and allow someone to be heard. I never have a problem with hearing from the public, but we just don't have the correct item in front of us.
Okay, thank you, uh, Council President Priggin. So is there a motion on the floor to revisit item number nine?
Motion to revisit item number nine.
Seconded by Councilmember Wingo.
Council, Council President Priggin seconded, right? Did you second that, Council President?
It doesn't matter. I'm okay with either one.
Yeah.
Give the opportunity to speak. I'm okay with it.
Okay.
Seconded by Council President Priggin, so this item is now open. And I believe we have Samantha White, who would like to speak. The floor is yours.
I greatly appreciate you guys revisiting this, excuse me, uh, Councilmembers. I greatly appreciate you guys revisiting this item. I did want to bring to, uh, your attention that, um, the, the whole purpose of this law was to reduce the amount of confrontation when citizens want to get information about the officer that's stopping them and how to file a complaint, which is the card that we had discussed and written into this piece of legislation. However, the document that came back from corporate council removed that automatic nature from this piece of legislation, and it does require citizens to actually verbally request, um, information which can escalate situations. Um, I, I, I hope that in corporate councils revisiting this, uh, document, that will be addressed. Additionally, if you look at section, and that would be section thirteen twenty-two A, and I have provided, um, Mr. Eartha with all of these comments in writing. Section thirteen twenty-two A one, um, it has changed the law so that when a person who may be accompanying somebody who is arrested or stopped during a, um, law enforcement activity, um, when there's a minor involved, that minor cannot even request a card, um, which goes in the face of the piece of legislation that we sent to you originally. The way that it reads i- in the current document is that, um, the guardian or a responsible adult would have to be there and, and request the card. So they've removed the automatic nature out of this law, uh, again, which was designed to reduce confrontation. Additionally, here with me one second. I'm just trying to. There are multiple evers inside of the document, um, citing to incorrect portions of, um, the text. I have highlighted them all. Um, also, in doing a final check of the, uh, legislation and basically triple checking everything, it's not the Police Advisory Board that receives complaints that would need to be changed to the Commission of Citizens Rights and Community Relations. Additionally, um, with respect to the compliance section, and this, this is a major portion, um, we feel that, uh, criminal liability should be restored back into this document, back into this legislation. Um, the idea here is that if an officer has a pattern of conduct, which is noticed by the District Attorney's Office, you would leave the District Attorney the option to include, um, you know, to charge an officer for failing to, um, comply with this legislation. It also allows an officer to be terminated under this legislation. This compliance language is the same language that the council used for carryals law, also known as the duty to intervene law. Um, and again, it would be the District Attorney's Office that would act as the gatekeeper, um, in terms of filing charges against the police. Additionally, um, under the section for public protests and implied consents of large groups, we had specifically included, um, we had specifically included an exception to public protests to prevent police from being able to go into a public protest and, um, basically, uh, try to search people within the group simply for congregating, because we feel that that is a violation of First Amendment rights. Um, that was removed, and, um, personally, I find that to be unacceptable. And, and that's, that's what I have. I've sent all of this in writing to Mr. Eartha. I, I can forward it off to, um, whoever's office if, if you so, if you would all like me to forward it to you, I, I would be glad to.
Thank you, Ms. White.
I believe that possibly Mr. Gresham may also want to speak.
Okay, thank you, Ms. White. Mr. Gresham, you have the floor if you want to speak.
Um, thank you. Um, just, just briefly, I think, I think Sam covered, um, a bit. Um, with respect to, I know that there was some, some idea that there may be some constitutional issues. Just wouldn't mind the council. The New York City and, uh, version of this law has been in place for several years. It's never been a successful constitutional challenge. Um, with respect to the, the protest exception, um, I, I think the, the main concern is, is really that, uh, there's a a protocol outlined where officers have to inform citizens, um, uh, if, you know, they have the right to refuse consent to a search, which is great. Um, the issue is that it, it, it doesn't apply to protests, right? Um, that's, you know, if, if that's what the council needs to do to get it passed, I think we understand that. The issue is that um, where a citizen has the right to refuse consent to a search, um, an officer cannot, uh, then search that citizen. That's unconstitutional. So making sure that there's some clarity around the language there, um, I think would be helpful. Um, I don't, I don't, I don't think that the minority bar or, or, you know, the coalition that's supporting this law is, um, gonna necessarily ready to die on the hill of, you know, uh, the public protest protocol being exactly the way that we would like, um, but we would at least ask that it follow, um, the, you know, established, uh, search protocol outlined in DeBoer and other kind of formative cases, um, in New York State and, and with respect to constitutional law. So that's, that's all I have. Um, but I would again refer you all to, to Ms. White's comments. Um, and, uh, just say that, you know, it has been six months, and when we do respect, uh, the council's desire to do this right, rather than to do it quickly. Um, but we are looking forward to, uh, you know, the passage of this law soon. Uh, it has been a long time coming. Um, there's broad support for this across, um, multiple sectors of the community, including, you know, groups that deal with crime victims, as well as defense attorneys, as well as prosecutors. So, um, we, we would ask the council to move as expeditiously as you can, and we thank you as always for hearing us out. That's all. Thanks.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Gresham. Council President Priggin.
Yeah, so I want to encourage, uh, Corporation Council. I know that she has, um, mostly the changes that were talked about today, and that's why I wanted to put the new document in, because we're going over something that has already been requested, and again, I have not seen the new document yet. Share it with, um, Ms. White, Mr. Gresham, and anybody else concerned, so that this, because I don't, I don't want anybody to get the feeling that the council is delaying it. Every time we go to vote for it, I get another group who has another revision. So I've been ready to move it. I'm, I'm willing to make the changes. Um, some of the changes that were presented today, and I believe that Ms. Gordon already has. I know she's on. Maybe she can speak to that, and we can, um, finally get this thing moving. It needs to move, and this council is not delaying it. We have brought it to the table, sent it back, sent it back, made the changes, and it, it seems as if I, I want to make sure that everybody out there knows that a majority of the council voted in favor to move forward what was brought to us. So, Ms. Gordon, I don't know if you have any comments? Yeah, I mean.
Thank you. This is Karen Gordon. Yes, um, some of those, um, concerns were either already noted by my office and also received by, I believe, through Emiss Miles Gresham. So some of those changes has already been, um, made. Um, I believe, as I said earlier, you would, um, receive the document to file it on day. Um, once you get it on Thursday, you could share it with, you know, whoever, groups you would like, but I do believe what we have for Thursday, if that is, should be the final.
Thank you.
Thank you, Corporation Council. Is there anyone else? Anyone else? I haven't looked at, uh, Majority Leader David Rivera.
Thank you. Um, just for clarity, um, it, it was mentioned that there were some deletions, some changes um, from the previous one to the current one. Um, I, I'd just like to understand the rationale for the deletion. Um, so at least the general public knows this is why this was deleted and this was changed, because uh, we don't get involved into, you know, in that particular aspect of it in terms of, of why wasn't something included, or why was it taken out? Uh, so there's some clarity in terms of, uh, an explanation, and maybe Corporation Council might be. might be able to explain some of the changes and some of the deletions and some of the things that could be included. So the general public would have an idea why they were deleted.
Assistant Corporation Counsel Karen Gordon. I can't at this moment speak about all the changes, but what I can, based on my memory, as it relates to the minor, I do believe we did receive information from the public to have the language adjusted. I think the way the language is written right now, it does not allow for the minor to request any information from, from the officer. Partly, the rationale behind that was to reduce confrontation with minors. I, I think the overall rationale when it comes to policing is to reduce confrontation. I do get the point that the, the desire to have an automatic requirement to have business cards and so forth handed out, but there are situations where those automatics are not necessary. And as it relates specific to the minor, we wanted to reduce that confrontation. I do believe what we would do in that case to, I guess, to take care of all the concerns would be to include a portion allowing for either information to be collected from the minor so we can contact guardian or someone to provide those information on the stopped or anything that may have included, you know, stations with the minor. But the overall intent there was to just reduce as much as possible any contact minors to prevent, to prevent any possibility of them having, you know, any early information, police information on their record at all.
Thank you, Corporation Counsel. Is there any? Councilmember Wyatt.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'm referring to Mr. Gresham's comment that this law is currently in New York City and it hasn't been challenged. And so Karen, because we, this law currently exists in New York City and when we talk about making changes in that, is that those changes based on what our local laws may be as opposed to what New York City's laws are?
Well, as you know, Councilmember, New York City is a very large city with, with very, a lot of laws that are very different than the city of Buffalo. And so we did look at what New York City has. I do believe the iteration of what you have before you is very much modeled after New York City laws. That being said, although there has not been a challenge, it doesn't mean that it will never be a challenge. And I do believe that part of, you know, our duty is to try to prevent as much. And if we have an opportunity to reduce the interaction of minors with police, I, I think we should try to do that. Not saying that we would get it absolutely correct, but we would try our best. And if there's any way that we need to make provisions, I do believe my office is very open and willing to do that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Wyatt. Are there any other council members that would like to speak on this? Okay, so I believe that the, that we will just make a motion to table, Majority Leader.
Motion to table.
Seconded by Councilmember Bowman. I do have one item that might need to be addressed. I have it in my internal sheet. It is item twenty-eight. It's a food store at three sixty William. It's in the Ellicott District. I don't know.
Take from the table, item twenty-eight. That one is actually open.
Okay, it's open. Okay, so this item is open. Is there anyone here to speak on the item?
Mr. Chairman, at the direction of Council President Pridgen, we sent several messages to try to get the applicant to come back in. However, we've not received any response on that, so I would defer it to the Council President who has disconnected from the line. Perhaps this should be tabled for the next cycle.
Thank you.
Motion to table.
Motion is to table, seconded by Councilmember Wyatt.
Are there any other items?
I do not believe there are any other items before us.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, seconded by Councilmember Bowman.